All right, it is now six o'clock based on the bell across the street. At which time I will call the meeting as properly posted to order. And all those who can, please pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We have to read the television notice again? We're good to go, I think.
We're good to go.
Yeah. The agenda for this evening is approval of minutes for June 7th, regular session, June 28th, regular session, June 28th, executive session, June 19th, regular session, and July 19th, regular session, July 19th, executive session. Facilities, summer projects, presentation. MDPH sports concussion letter of affirmation request. SRO contract and MOA for 2023 and 2024, approval for tonight. Discussion of the memorandum of agreement. Bussing update, handbook update, summer lunch program, report and free lunch, 2324, and shelter homeless family update as well. So with that, would someone like to make a motion for approval of minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay, so are you approving regular sessions, June 6th?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve all of them en masse.
Okay. Someone might also want to amend the executive session minutes.
The executive session minutes can only be approved in executive session.
That's correct. Okay, and we're not going to have an executive session tonight, so we can't do that.
But we can approve the regular session.
So your motion is for all the regular session minutes?
Yes, for all the regular sessions.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye? Opposed? No names? Five is zero, zero, thank you. Facility summer projects. I think Kelly's gonna do it.
Can I make a little point of order here?
Okay.
Sir. So I know we have a new staff helping us with the agenda, and I think we're missing a couple pieces that we normally have on our standing agenda, which is superintendent's update, assistant superintendent's update, finance and facilities update, and then school committee member update. So we're missing that chunk that usually just sits on our agendas.
You are correct, and I am picking that up now too.
And our student representative update, which is very important, so.
So with that in memory in mind, Amber, would you like to give us a report?
Yes, thank you, that's why it's a good warm-up meeting for all of us, I apologize. Yes, so.
I was trying to hurry the meeting.
It is our warm-up meeting, which is what I was gonna say. So I was just looking at the same thing when we were stepping, I'm like, I missed that, not Lynn, I'm in charge of onboarding her. So I'm like, oh, I'm definitely rusty. So welcome back to the upcoming school year. This is officially our first meeting, which annually is held on the Monday before the opening of school on Wednesday, as an opportunity where we gather to allow you an opportunity to get oriented and hear about the upcoming preparations for the school year, to get a report on buildings and grounds, and to do some annual reassignments of important jobs and things and contracts that we need to have marked for the start of the school year. Our September 6th meeting also kind of gives us some time to start to move slowly into the year and then things kind of take off. So I believe that, first of all, today we had a really enjoyable opening with all faculty returning for their first day of, really a whole day of working meetings, and I want to thank all of you that were able to join us. And Steve Batchelor, we missed you, but we know you were doing that work at your own school. So similarly, we had a very enjoyable opening and comments, and we did a video, and faculty came back really with an opportunity to do a nice coffee and conversation, people get to connect. So I thought today the feeling was really just lovely, and they always appreciate so much having you there. I think it's fun for you to get to see the staff when they're kind of getting ready to take off on the year. So we are heading towards opening day, looking at rain, which is, you know, we haven't opened for rain on opening day in a while, so we'll make some adjustments as needed, but I think we're really excited for the year ahead. And for tonight, that's my report, I'll be stepping you through other things as we begin hearing from Kelly and people that have been doing that work to have us ready to open.
Daniel?
I just want to echo Amber's comments that it was a great opening with the staff this morning. They went from being all together at the high school to their individual buildings, where there were faculty meetings that were held, and they were served lunch, and, you know, we're just all, you know, getting ready for the kids and excited for it. One thing I would add to Amber's report is, over the summer, the leadership team, department heads, curriculum coordinators, and directors met for three days to just go to work together. We always have a retreat, spend like three days together, talking about the upcoming year, processing about last year in terms of, you know, what were things that went well, where we'd like to be better in the coming year, and focusing on curriculum and variety of initiatives for the year. And I think that was a particularly productive event over the summer, and it was just got us into a good place to get started. My report.
Anita.
Thank you. I just started around two months ago, I'm very happy to be here. I'll be going into detail regarding an update for our bussing and our summer meals program and our free reduced free meals and breakfast for our students moving forward later in the agenda.
Thank you. Ellie, your first time?
We're not back in school yet, so I don't have any specific updates, but I think we're all excited to go back.
Yeah. The excitement today with the teachers back in the building was really quite amazing. It took them a while to quiet down, so I think they were glad to be there. Jakub?
Yes, hi, good to be back here. Just one little update, over the summer, we had a few meetings with the Sustainable Westboro Committee, I had the chance to meet Anita in person, and I'd be happy to know, I mean, to find out later, maybe offline or maybe the next meeting, what is the current status, but I think the school applied for the grant, or is in the process of applying for a grant for the electric buses. Yeah, it's more complicated than it seemed at first, but.
Of course.
Yeah, 3B is always more complicated than it seems.
But it's in progress, yeah, that's all.
Kristin?
Thank you. Nope, just happy to be back, but I did have a question, I did share about the amazing video with some friends of mine, and they were wondering if it will be made available for the public, like on the website or something. It was just super inspiring to see and hear from graduates, recent and, you know.
Very past, yeah.
From very past, and to hear how Westboro Schools impacted them and all their success and what they brought with them.
Yeah.
That's possible.
I hadn't even thought about it, I probably would ask them before I do a wider release, just because we, you know, we told them I was to share with faculty for opening day, so I'll probably just do one or two checks with them, but certainly if they're comfortable with that, we'd be happy to share it out. It's certainly really a positive message around the work.
Yeah, maybe in one of your updates or something.
Yeah, definitely.
It would be really nice, it was really, really inspiring, so, thank you.
Yeah, I've been thinking about it all day, that's a very good idea, so.
Great.
No, no updates, but I am really excited to be back, and it's wonderful to be here.
There you go, and the checks start again, too.
You had a double today, that's right.
Sarah?
Same, very excited to be back, I also wanted to say today was, it was the first time I was able to attend the faculty comeback tradition, and it was so wonderful, it was so nice to see the energy in the room. I love, love, loved the video, I think like everyone else, I wasn't expecting it, so it was very nice that you guys were able to compile a video of all these different grads and what they've been doing, and I think it's very inspiring and motivating for, you know, the faculty, and as Kristin mentioned, possibly the student population and even outside of that, so I think that was really superb. I also really enjoyed hearing you speak, Amber, I thought that you had some wonderful words of wisdom, you also, the second half of your speech, which you touched upon how important it is for us and for faculty to create this connection with families, and, you know, share information and give, develop or build upon that base of trust to develop it, and really, and I think that right now, in the times that we're in, it's so important, so I appreciate you having shared that, and it was a really nice event, so thank you.
Yeah.
And my short report is, yes, it's time for us to get back in the saddle, and the saddle for me was the failed school and where we are in negotiations to settle. We had a discussion with Vertex, our owner's project manager this afternoon, which will instigate, I guess, our next meeting with the school building committee and on the 7th to discuss where we are in those negotiations, and perhaps come to a conclusion in what we can do about it. So at this point, I will be searching with the committee to find out whether or not they can attend a meeting, probably a Zoom meeting, either on the 7th of September or the 14th. So we can move that along and hopefully reach closeout and receive the remaining money that's due us from the MSBA. So that's my report for the night.
Excellent.
With that, it's your turn, Kelly.
Yes.
This was just to get you really tense.
It was like a warm-up, Kelly, so please come up and join us. So Kelly G. Capello is our director of Buildings and Grounds.
So I just have another.
Yeah, one more interruption. And that is, we normally have a public comment period for what we've just talked about, if anybody would like to speak to the committee, you're welcome to. Okay, now it's your turn.
Sorry, Kelly, the agenda failings are mine, I apologize, I can't believe how many times I looked at it and didn't see it. So Kelly G. Capello is our new director of Buildings and Grounds, you've known Kelly for many years as our assistant director, really pleased to have her moved into the directorship position. And we just hired a new assistant director of Buildings and Grounds, who will be starting shortly, and when he arrives, we'll do an announcement of who he is and welcome him to the district as well, I feel like we're staged to come into a really positive year ahead. So this is an annual process where Kelly comes and gives you a snapshot of the range of work that was done across the district in preparation for the opening of school, so I will turn it over to her. She'll go through, she's got a PowerPoint, but she also provided a memo for you, which gave you some of those bullets. So Kelly, you are up.
So we accomplished, I think, quite a bit this summer, we did an awful lot of grounds work at all the schools that was needed. And we had some extra hands, some of our recent graduates worked the summer with us, and they were awesome. It was very helpful. We just accomplished a lot that we've been wanting, we've been talking about but didn't get to, and with our maintenance staff, we did a spreadsheet for each school as to what needs to be done, what we should be looking at, and maintenance and myself and others, you know, gave input, and so it's all kind of archived now, so that we have an idea of what we should conquer next year in the summer. So we're thinking not just now, but even in the future, what is needed for the schools that we can accomplish. So at the high school.
Do you want me to do the slides?
Yeah.
You just need to let me know when you want me to go to the next one.
Yeah. So this is Westboro High School, and that was a little bit of fun they did with the signage, with the flowers and chairs, everyone seemed to like it, though. So we did a lot of, the next one is the handrails at the high school, they were in need of some help, and so we sanded them down, the staff did, and then they repainted them, and they look very, very nice now. And then we installed new VCT floor in the elevator, did I miss the one?
Yeah.
I got the elevator.
New floor in the elevator. And then, sorry, ground cleanup and updates throughout the whole campus. Five sets of exterior doors were repainted in need, and we want to do more. The mullion, there was a mullion replaced in one of the double doors, it had lived its life, but we're waiting on product, and that got completed also in August. The exterior batting cage refreshed with new netting, new stone dust. We also now have a welder so that we can fix a lot of the equipment for the outside athletics, instead of waiting for a vendor to help us out. So also, one boiler at the high school did their, had the inspection, Bill Gabbarino had decided to do one a year, to make the process a little bit easier than all of them at one time, and that seems to have worked out very well. And the walk-in freezer at the high school had a repair condensing unit and two evaporators, and it was done by Atlantic Refrigeration with Bill Gabbarino overseeing the project. We collaborated quite a bit with the DPW in town, and they did painting for us on the asphalt. I know people were really happy to see that, it hadn't been done in a while, and Chip, our resource officer, commented that it looked good, so he was happy to see that, too.
Also a member of the school committee?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We did have a water issue at the cafeteria on August 18th, when we had all that heavy rain that came down. And Meyer, our insurance company, came out so quickly, our custodians were cleaning up the water almost immediately, because they had been working in the area and noticed it. So we did luck out that we didn't have major damage, but enough where we have to replace the floor in the cafeteria, which we're working on dates that are going to work for that.
So that's never happened in my years here, it literally came up through the floor, so the groundwater was so backed up. Now, because we do get that inclined hill, we usually get the shed that comes down, and we've never had a backup problem like that. I don't know if there's, you know, another assessment that we need to look at as to if there was a secondary problem as to why that would have happened, but it literally just came up under the tiles, through the ground floor and backed up, you know, a good,
Yeah, we were fortunate because we had a pump in place.
Yeah, and so the repair will also incorporate a low cut of the drywall and replacement and painting of the whole space, so it's a good repair, but we'll need to manage probably February break is what we're thinking, so some staged work, and then a full floor replacement, and the refurbishment of the wall and painting over February break.
So then Gibbon School. So one of our larger projects there was to refinish the robotics classroom, classroom 48, so the, previously it had been painted and the paint was coming up, and it just really wasn't conducive for the robots. So we had a company come in and they grinded it down, and did a nice finish on it, and it should be very good for the robotics and the teacher and not having to clean the robots at a regular basis because of the paint. It looks wonderful, everyone seems to be very happy with it. Also. VCT floor repair in the hallway was done by our maintenance staff, and there's a few more areas he'd like to tackle when he has a week off. Collaboration with the DPW again for the parking lots. Mulch installed around picnic table area, which was a wonderful thing to see happen because there's no grass left, so it was really mostly mud when the kids were trying to sit to eat, so the mulch should take care of that, and it looks better and it'll be better for their shoes. The gym floor was refinished in August also. And, oh, the DPW also did the sweeping of all our parking lots at every school, and they were all in need of that after the rough winter. The next school is Mill Pond. Grounds updates to all mulch beds, removal of shrubs and trees, mulch in all areas. They did, that area was really quite large, and they did a great job on that. They did painting in the bandroom. And also painting just outside the bathrooms, they were just getting a little bit worn, the kids going in and out and touching the finish, so they took care of that, too, maintenance staff did. Gym floor refinished again in August, safety chips for the playground were installed. We have a good-sized maintenance room, and they did some organizing in that area to make it more conducive when other maintenance staff are coming in and out of the same building. Replaced exterior door sweeps, again, the sweeping of the school, and two new fire doors are on order, we're waiting for them to come in. The auditorium door had some issues and needs to be replaced, and it's just the two, we're just waiting for them to come in, and then they'll be installed. We also had an AHU rooftop unit motor replaced, which was kind of, it was quite a feat, it was like 400 pounds to get off the roof and then put the new one in, and Bill Gabbarino oversaw that also.
Is that the one that set the smoke alarm off?
Yeah.
So there was a smoke alarm over at Mill Pond, and I just want to give a shout-out to our fire department, they are amazing, they were on the ground so quickly, and then they bring in all the fans, and they're just so helpful, like they don't just come in and, you know, say you're all clear, they stay and they help, and really an amazing, amazing team, really, really wonderful.
Had it all, you know, ready to go for when the kids pulled up.
Yeah, they're just really amazing.
They turned it around very quickly for us. And the next would be the Armstrong Elementary School. Again, a lot of cleanup, that, you know, ground cleanup there, and that picture with just the grass that's.
Look at that new grass.
Yes, we had to showcase that.
Yeah.
The kids are gonna love it, playing soccer and stuff out there with the new playground.
Never looked so good.
Yeah, it was really well done, shout-out to John Frye. And, yeah, they do such a good job.
Mike Hightower.
And Mike Hightower, again, people who just take the work really personally and give us their best, and at an absolutely fabulous cost, and they're just such good partners.
Had the rain to water it, so it was perfect.
Yeah, if there were all the seasons to put in new grass, this was it, so.
We also did installation of a new walk-in refrigerator freezer.
There it is, finally, the Armstrong freezer came.
Yes, it's all filled with the food for the kids and ready to go. We did interior painting in numerous areas also. As you know, the schools need a lot of painting, so we get as much done as we can, and we have great staff that are willing to do that. Installation of whiteboards, and then the sweeping of the parking lot again. Hastings School, their grounds are bigger than you think when you start tearing stuff apart there, for sure. So ground cleanup and updates, including churning of shrubs, mulch removal of trees and shrubs. Cleaning and removal of debris in the interior courtyards at Hastings, because it's older and the weeds just come up so quickly, that those were all cleaned out also. Spreading of safety mulch in all the play areas. We do that in-house also. Interior painting in numerous hallways, foyer area, main office, there was a lot of There was a lot of painting done at Hastings this year and it looks amazing. Installation of new whiteboards and tack boards throughout the school. Also replacing exterior door sweeps. And again, collaboration with the DPW. And a new exterior door was installed in August in the kitchen. It had lived its life, so we didn't know if we were going to get it in time for school opening, but we did. So that was a feat to help us. And then the WEP preschool had requested eight new cabinets for their bathrooms, you know, for essentials for the students that would be at arm's length for them to help the students. So we did accomplish that and put the cabinets together and hung them and they seemed to be very happy with that. And they look great in the bathrooms, too. It's a little bit more organized for them. And then Bales Elementary School. We refinished...
Look at that view.
Beautiful picture.
It's crazy.
Isn't that nice? Everyone comments on that when they see that.
Yeah.
And that's a sunrise.
Yeah.
Somebody was there at 6 o'clock in the morning to do that.
Totally.
Yeah, exactly. So we refinished all exterior benches, power washed, sanded them and stained them. Interior painting of this stairway in the cafeteria. Refinishing handrails in the staircase and cafeteria. Some corner boards are on order to be installed. Little hands, you know, walking around, so it's good to have a little bit more protection on the corners. And installation of fencing by the playground. It was just to add a little bit because the kids would play and the balls would go too far for them to get and go into the woods. So we just extended that fencing a little bit and they seem to be happy with that. And then electrical, there was quite a bit electrical done throughout the summer and our electrician did have a helper with him, which helped immensely. So a lot of it was, you know, new smart boards, new outlets, conduit, repair or damage, you know, some items in the classrooms. Also, all new exterior lighting at the Gibbons Middle School. We found out about a program at Granite City Electrical that was going to cost us about $34, $3,500, but there was a grant process that as long as you get them installed within 30 days, they come out and look. And so our costs went down to $780 to put the new lighting out at Gibbons. And it was needed. We had some broken lights and so it was just time to do all of them at one time and be safe when people are coming and going at night. They did a lot of work in the gyms for conduits also and just some, you know, minor repairs within the classrooms that are needed. And the TVs were also added in the foyer area of all the schools, too.
I think, too, it's an important context to realize, these are all the specialized summer projects and they layer on top of the rollover maintenance that has to be done where all of the desks, chairs, all the equipments wiped down, washed, all the floors are redone and waxed. If you came to the high school today, you saw how well they look. And I think it's important to recognize that one of the strengths of Kelly's team is that because we have those maintenance members of the custodial team all working together, the maintenance, we do a lot in-house. So Kelly's continued to develop their skill sets, like training, getting training for one of them and covering to become a welder. We have our own in-house electrician right now. And the differential alone between what we saved in one year when we didn't have Ryan and when we do have Ryan was over $150,000 in sub-cost of the outsourcing of the electrical work we had to do with Dell before we brought Ryan back in-house. So it's, it's no small substantial, I mean, you know, when you're contracting work, the amount of grounds work that we do interior, that we do on our own, all of this work really is highly cost-effective and you've got this, basically a small team of four maintenance guys doing all of that, doing all that painting, all that specialized work so that we're not subcontracting all of that out at a much higher cost. So I'm really, really pleased with what they accomplished and they keep our schools in incredibly good shape. So what's helpful is Kelly's assessment and having the team keep a running list of what they see that needs to be done and then working with him to rotate it through so that we can get a lot done.
The summer staff that used to be students in Westboro, they, they were all students here in Westboro and now they're in college. We didn't realize all this happens in the summer. They were just amazed at everything that gets accomplished and how hard, you know, everyone's working to make sure we're on, we're on target for school opening and the teachers that would like to come in a little earlier, they try to make that work out so that they can get in their classroom if they had a vacation at a different time or whatever it may be. So we try to accommodate everyone all summer, too. And the schools are full with kids through the summer, too.
Well, that's the other thing, right? We run programs in, actually, all of the schools throughout the summer. We have the Sky Rice Theater programs in and out. We have rec, we have summer school, and we have community ed, all spread across the schools. And then the athletes are in and out and, you know, we're here working, too. So it's a busy place and the custodial team has learned how to strategically, working with Kelly, kind of manage that. So I'm very, very pleased with our preparation for the year. Do you have questions for Kelly or anything you'd like to kind of add?
And at the end, there's pictures of...
Picture of the team. There's the maintenance team that did all of that.
They make me smile, they're just so happy.
Painting, everything, the, and these are the guys that, I mean, keep that high school unbelievable, unbelievable.
The middle school, they're just so proud of everything that they accomplish and do. And they all pick their different areas within the school.
Have their pictures taken, yeah.
So then, so that was one of our summer helpers and it was Nick Pascal. And the boys, they would leave very dirty every day. And tired. They did an awesome job. That was up at Mill Pond, Jake, too. He used to, I think he still does work with IT a little bit, too. And the girls, yep, Skylar and Rachel.
They worked really hard and they get a lot done, so, you know, kudos to the team.
I got very good feedback from all head custodians that our summer help was awesome and they worked hard and they weren't slackers, they were just unbelievable and they had a good attitude, you know, being there, too. And so many of them, you know, thank you for the opportunity this summer, we hope to come back next summer. So they were really happy working here, too. And they saw a lot that they never saw before with the schools. And they took it all in.
They did. Any questions for Kelly, comments?
One question. It looks amazing. You've done a lot of work. Is this a typical summer?
We tackled different things this summer. You know, everyone's eye sees something different. I felt that the grounds really needed it. At Hastings, you couldn't even see the signage anymore, you know, just needed a nice refresh. And then next year, it'll be easier for us because we won't be pulling out trees and stumps and, and all kinds of things like that. So I think going forward, it'll be easier for us to maintain. This was a really working summer at Westfowers Grounds Go.
Yeah, definitely. We didn't have any major, major projects, so it let us come in and do a lot of the detail work, which was really, really helpful. And we weren't trying to put a school back together. And when we have that team, that's had to have been a priority. And they're also moving multiple rooms in the buildings and stuff. So again, you've got this like small and mighty team doing the work across these six large buildings and they get a lot done, so. Any other comments? We're good. So we look forward to Kelly running the ship this year and she'll be in and out for different presentations and things are off to a really, really good start, so. Thank you. And she'll probably do a walkthrough tomorrow to make sure things are really looking brushed up. I tend to do walkthroughs during the summer, you know, I can just key myself in and give it all a look and we're in really good shape for opening.
Yeah, the schools did a great job this year keeping up even with the busyness that was going on and, and, you know, the head custodians, they have a very good rapport with their staff and so do we. And I think that just gives them the extra to get it all done.
And now the teachers come in and kind of make a mess to get ready. So they're, they're going to come in and they've got to unpack all their stuff. So you know how it gets messier before it gets better? So that's what today and tomorrow are, it gets messier before it gets better. And the custodians are incredibly patient, moving lots of boxes, lots of stuff. There's a lot of, can you drag this table down to Jill? She needs it. So there's just a really nice camaraderie and they're developing and, you know, putting furniture together. I mean, there's a really hectic pace to those two days, but the custodial team does it really seamlessly and we'll be ready on Wednesday.
And they, we stagger their start and end times the last couple of weeks of the school year, of the summer so that, you know, teachers want to come in and get their room ready. So they'll have, you know, we'll do a 12 to 8 or 11 to 7 so that they have longer time to get that addressed in the way they want their room looking before their students arrive. And we've done that the last couple of years and it seems to really work for staff and students and, and even the office staff, knowing that things are all set.
And the principals do a nice job of rotating out emails to let the faculty know when different sections are closed for cleaning and open for cleaning and use and so teachers can kind of come in and out strategically. So, you know, that's just a lot of kind of that coordination, collegial work that, that makes this team a really, a really special group. So thank you. We are off and running for the year and we're going to cut Kelly loose to go home. She's up early, taking those early pictures. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, we will see you.
Thanks, Kelly. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the MDPH Sports Concussion Letter of Affirmation Request.
Thank you. So Kelly's report is really our major, major update tonight. It's the readiness to be open and a lot of these are steps through making sure we have contracts in place for the year to run. So one of these is our annual concussion affirmation that we've done the training, that we have everything in place, that the handbooks are updated, our athletes are informed and that our athletic trainers are current. We have just hired a second athletic trainer, which we were looking for all last year, you remember, and carried it on the student activities account to try to fill that position. Really pleased we found a new trainer and she's off to a very good start. And so we've expanded that team because remember, they have to be at multiple, multiple places. So now that we often have to send a trainer to travel with the football team, you have to have, you have to have a strategic plan so that one of them can go to Gibbons and be on that upper field while one's here. So very, very pleased coming into the year. But their training is in place. This is really a formal vote for you to take. I sent you the paperwork ahead of time and you just should be able to vote that we have an affirmation of our policy being ready to go.
Is there any questions from the committee in regards to the content of this request and the information provided? None and a motion to approve or affirm the, the school concussion response to the executive, I guess, of the...
It's the, let me just make the motion. It would be affirm, to vote to approve the affirmation letter to the Department of Public Health regarding the concussion policy.
And I guess we can include the fact that we have a draft letter to react to and if there's no comments on that, our vote would include issuing the draft letter by the superintendent of schools to the organization who requires it. So again, back to the motion.
Okay, ready? I think I got it. I make a motion that we vote to affirm the district's head injury policy for extracurricular athletic activities, policy J J I F, and that we send the copy of the draft letter as our final letter for, to be filed with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Five to zero.
Known student athletes, I think we do a fine job to care for them with screenings and the post-concussion testing and a lot of good training. And our coaches are the ones you really have to train well to watch our students carefully because students will often shield not telling you because they want to play. Our coaches do a really fine job with the athletic trainer to make sure we keep our kids safe. Next up, another affirmation agreement. We annually need to agree to vote to approve the MOA agreement for SRO, our School Resource Officer. It's an annual approval. I sent you the state contract that they developed for us. You reviewed this very closely last year because it was a change and a more involved contract. I met with Todd Minardi this week to go through it. What is today? I can't remember my days. I met with him on Thursday, so he and I sat down, went through the contract, discussed the framework of the SRO agreement, agreed that we will meet two times a year at least to check in on the process of how the SRO collaborative relationship is working. I, I just want to acknowledge that Todd really reached out and was looking forward to collaboration and we had a really good meeting about the role of the SRO and, and Chip Dappelite's work and, and how to continue to improve all of the connections and communication that we share. So I certainly am very comfortable approving our MOA as presented, as I think we have a really strong model here in Westboro that's been working well for us.
So I assume we would fill in today's date and the month in the document that we have, which is two pages and it references the, the state contract. The fee for this is a dollar. And it's a contract required between, in effect, the town and the schools relative to police services. So having said that, is there a motion to approve the agreement as discussed?
I move that we approve the SRO contract and MOA.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Thank you.
Five to zero.
Chip is out on a brief leave, a medical leave, and so we have coverage in place. I again want to thank Todd for putting a really good plan in right away and having the, the person covering reach out. And so we should be in a kind of seamless phase through the first couple of weeks in September. And we've also been working at shifting some of our Alice training earlier to make sure that by the close of October, it was one of the corrections we wanted to make last year, that everybody would have their preliminary training by close of October. We should still be on track for that. So I just feel like those kind of checks and things are all part of like getting ready for the start of the year. So again, heading into a good plan for the year and we're ready to go. Let's see...
So while we're doing the next order of business, I'll pass around the contract to sign?
Perfect, that would be great, actually. The next order of business is a busing update from Anita, so I would turn it over to her if you're comfortable with that. Oh, sorry, you go ahead.
No, it's all right. I was just going to say, finally, after all this time, you get a chance to talk.
I just want to start by saying that our transportation director, Cindy Crowley, has done a fantastic job facilitating the routes with NRT. She's been working tirelessly all summer to make sure that we're ready to go for this coming Wednesday. Also, with that said, I want to say that we have been running into a lot of issues with NRT since the summer. Similar to last year, they are only able to provide us for 25 buses versus the 27 contracted buses that we're supposed to have. And their reason for that is they're saying that there's a lack of drivers overall. And also, we've also been running into just overall communication delays on their end. Cindy has been, Cindy will have to send three... emails to them or call them tirelessly in order for them to respond back to us, which is causing a hardship for our department as well, because she works for the Buildings and Grounds Department as well. But she's dedicating 100% of her time towards transportation versus 60% of her time, which is causing a little bit of a delay on our end as well because of them. With that said, I am working with our attorney, and he is drafting a letter to NRT outlining all of their contractual shortcomings. And we're going to be sending it to them in the next week or so.
What would you anticipate would be the reaction to that letter?
So, I have spoken to their vice president of operations, and I have made it very clear to him that since he's only providing us with 25 buses of the 27 similar to last year, we are only going to be providing the payment for 25 buses and not the 27 buses.
That's what I was after. Thank you.
Yes. And he agreed to that. But I think I have highlighted to NRT on a number of occasions through email that we are disappointed with their lack of responsiveness. And also, according to their contract, we are supposed to have a designated NRT contact person there, kind of like a NRT representative on their side. But the one representative that has been assigned to us, she's also assigned to four other communities, which is why there's always a lag in them responding back to us in a timely fashion.
Do they have a program by which they're supposed to, in effect, create additional drivers that's enforceable? Or is it just, well, we tried and that's what we got?
So, when I spoke to the vice president of operations maybe two, three weeks ago, he had said that he had about two dozen individuals that are going through like the schooling and the program to get certified. But he said that he couldn't guarantee that any of those two dozen drivers would be assigned to Westboro, because it depends on where they live and if they want to come out here and work for us. So, there's really no guarantee that we're going to be assigned any of those drivers.
With council, we probably ought to figure out a way that we can make it enforceable. We know every town around here is in trouble with drivers. The only one that seems to have enough is Boston. Isn't that a surprise?
Well, just a couple, a couple additional points to this, which is, one, as soon as we get the year up and running, we'll reinstitute the every-two-week meeting. And I think Sarah's able to lean in on that and be on those so that we can keep pressure on them and issue more legal notices back to them. Violation of their contract could put them out of bidding for the contract in the future. So, delineating very clearly in a legal notice from our lawyers where they're in breach of contract is an essential stage of this year to be clear that in not meeting those compliant pieces on multiple layers, that, you know, they could be excluded from the bid in the future. So, I think that could apply some pressure. But again, we're going to work with our lawyers throughout the discussion. I think we're supposed to have a dedicated person to Westboro as our dispatch coordinator, and we don't, as Anita said. So, there's multiple layers. I mean, we maintain 25 drivers that are dedicated Westboro drivers. We kind of brought those drivers to the contract with us, which means they haven't been able to come through with two drivers.
Hmm. Yeah.
After all summer. So, you know, they're grossly understaffed across both their administrative layer and their, and their busing layer. So, again, I think these issues are ones we discussed all last year. I think we want to get a jump on, on the legal piece of it. So, when we get the draft of that letter, Anita figured that she would push it to Sarah as the committee chairperson working on that, and we'll, you know, provide an update on the 6th to all of you. If we need to post an executive session of more strategic conversation regarding the contract, then I'll post it to executive based upon where we end up with the letter and the guidance of our lawyer. So, I think for now, you know, we don't want to get in more depth of conversation. But, you know, they haven't improved over the summer. So...
Yeah, obviously, they have problems from many places. But, you know, to the extent that we can be maybe a little stronger, a little more intelligent in the way we pursue what our needs are, and maybe at the committee level, we have additional discussions as to how we can improve this thing.
Yeah.
Really want to be ahead of it rather than get stuck like Framingham did and others, Marlborough.
Yeah.
But we want to keep it the way it is. That is favorable to us. So, good. Thank you.
Yeah, just one question. So, if we only get 25 buses, are we going to make do with 25 or get extra two buses from a different company?
So, we designed the routes right now. They sent, so, they sent routes designed for the 25-bus route. If they reached a place where they could consistently provide 27 drivers, they would split off several routes and, you know, shorten the runs. I mean, it's really a strategic timing issue. And if you add two more buses, you save time on the whole overall run. So, their perspective that, well, the buses are running effectively and we're getting there on time, doesn't match up with our data. And Anita's really pressed them on that. And we were clear that it's not their choice to decide to give us 27 or 25. Like, I want 25. I mean, I want 27. So, you know, we want 27 buses, and they're giving us 25 and telling us it's fine. So, you know, we're just in a cycle with them that needs and requires a lot of pressure points being picked up this year.
Yeah. And I was going to say, I think that one of the things that we sort of need to acknowledge in our conversations with them, or that they need to, I think they've come out with this a little bit, is I'm not sure internally what's happening there as far as the structure of the actual company. I think that that's playing a huge role. I know you mentioned that we have a driver shortage everywhere. We do. But I think, I think Shrewsbury's been pretty, been doing well with their company. I think some other towns have been doing just fine. But I think overall, anybody dealing with NRT is having a huge issue. So, and I do think that their perspective is that, hey, we're getting all the kids there. What do you care whether it's 25 or 27 buses? But clearly, we do care. And clearly, and they, you know, we're paying them in accordance with that agreement. So, they've, there's been, you know, several failures, as far as I know, you guys are aware of more, based on my assessment last, you know, school year that we had done briefly. But as far as what you were saying, Steve, about, I think you, you asked a question about how we can twist their arm into something. I think you were talking about, no, but you were asking a very specific question, and I just slipped my...
Yeah. My implication was what you just said, but I didn't use those words.
That's a legal term Sarah just broke out.
Yeah, that's it. Really, what I'm after, I think, in this general discussion is to make sure that the things that we want, that is, we want 27 buses. We don't want just buses. What we want them to do is deliver the kids at the school within the time that we've defined, because in the previous contract, we had them coming late, which isn't good for the kids. So, ultimately, when we structure this thing, and maybe we already have, because I haven't, you know, read it line by line. But the importance of why we want 27 buses isn't their choice. It's because we want the kids picked up from the route that they have and delivered to school on time based on the contract. And so, we need to put within the contract all those things that are enforceable. So, when they don't deliver, we have a contractual basis in order to ping them. And therefore, the penalty is going to escalate based on poor performance. Now, I think every city and town in Massachusetts has had to put up with the fact that certain few bid, sometimes nobody bids, sometimes you have to offer some kind of incentive to get some contractor to show up and deliver the product. And I think this, in my opinion, the cycle of, of being under the thumb of bus companies has lasted way too long. And, you know, somehow or another, I think we got to figure out a way to solve our problem, which is delivering kids, you know, on the routes that we've chosen to school, to the schools where they go on time.
Right.
So that the kids are not penalized.
I also think that what Amber brought up is a good point. If, if having sent legal notice or delineating exactly what their failures have been in writing, you know, through our attorney, is going to help to preclude them from bidding. I mean, I think that's our best strategic, I mean, that's what I would say, because the problem is that we're also stuck between a rock and a hard place in terms of how to navigate this. And part of what the strategy last year was, is also, okay, well, this is the problem we have on our hands. Now, how do we get around that? Ultimately, the problem is ours. So, we need to just figure out how we can get our kids where they need to go in a timely fashion and, you know, not be paying these people who aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. So, trying to manage both of those things. So, you know, I'm excited to work on this this year, and hopefully, we can try and come up with some creative solutions.
I mean, one of the other things that will come and actually stare us in the face is if Yakub and the committee that is trying to get us electric buses, delivers electric buses, now that's another input into this contract with who's going to drive them. And so, we have to be on our toes in regards to what that's going to turn out to be. Because if, if it doesn't happen within the defined, let's say, request for proposal, and we define what buses are available, et cetera, then we'll have a penalty somehow by virtue of forcing the contractor to use our equipment. So, all this is going to play into that. Granted, it may not happen this time, but sooner or later, we will get electric buses, because they're happening. Boston has a bunch of them going to come. And I think other, two or three other cities and towns in Massachusetts got free buses or almost free buses.
Yeah, we'll be able to provide a more clear update on the status of that process on the 6th. You know, a little bit more around those grants. Is that when you were going to do that? Is that, yeah, on the 6th. So...
I have a question. I know that we run some late buses, and we have buses for athletics. And so, I'm sure, I'm just assuming this is going to impact that as well.
You know, it's, again, like, I think it's the same strand of issues we struggled with last year. We successfully were able to complete the year, but it doesn't run with the refinement of excellence that we expect for the service delivery. And it has impacts that wear on the people trying to run the programming and the organization. And it, and it can, you know, lead to a tier of late. So, we want to begin this year by being hopeful that we can be in a better place, but keep you aware. And we're looking to leverage very early our legal backup. And then, the regular set of meetings with clear notes delineated to make sure that we're on it early. So, again, there's a whole tier with vans as well, which they also own through Vanpool and the contract with AVC. And that is equally fragmented. And we were waiting today on the bus list. We still don't have the van lists. So, you know, that's way off on point in terms of being given the drivers and the van destination. Cindy basically mapped the work, but it's in their contract to provide it. So, again, I think Anita and Cindy have been on it and pressing forward with it. So, it will be a part of our year and an important part of our fall.
No, our drivers are amazing and...
Our drivers are really amazing, yes.
Yes. And for parents, you can find the bus routes on the school websites. And I say this every August, is just ask for all families patience on the first couple of days of school, because some buses are early, some are late. So, you know, just know that it's going to be off for a few days. And then, I also ask everyone in Westboro to have patience when driving downtown during the hours of maybe 7:30 to...
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty. That buses will be crisscrossing our community, and just let them go.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, no, thank you. And I think we will probably put out another reminder to families about that before Wednesday, just to tag everyone's patience. So, should be good. Any other questions on busing for Anita? She's done a nice job to get up to speed on it quickly. Anyone?
I actually just have a question. I don't know. So, what was happening between NRT and the drivers last year? Was that ever, I mean, I know they didn't end up striking. I don't think they even ended up striking in Framingham, which was of concern. But I'm just curious, was that ever put to bed in terms of, are we, I don't want to be back in that same place either.
Right. So, Anita has a call in actually to get a finalization of where they ended up contractually. They didn't tell us that they didn't settle it, but they, but our contract ended up being the last one that needed to be done. And that was a part of what they needed to do through the summer. But it speaks to the fact that they only communicate when prompted multiple times. We haven't gotten any, you know, proactive communication from them that we're all set and that our drivers have a contract. So, you know, again, like, we're picking up on our press with them. And so, we would hopefully have a copy of that or some content on that contract by the 6th.
Excellent. Okay, well, set with that. Move on to the handbook update.
So, thank you. You approved the handbooks at the end of the year, and they are currently being linked and pressed out to families over the next week. However, I have, I wanted to add one update to Gibbons and the High School to improve the language and the dress code for explicit, explicit dress in terms of speech, hate speech, or identifying information on shirts or gear if it is in violation of our policy. And so, it wasn't in there explicitly. And based on an additional legal case that came through, our lawyers indicated that we needed to update our language. They sent it to me. And so, I dropped it into just the two sections on dress code at Gibbons and the High School. And I'm just seeking your approval to update the code. And then, this will be clicked over tomorrow and live in the Google Docs, which makes it really helpful. So, at this time, I would just seek your vote to update the dress code component of Gibbons and the High School to be in compliance with our advice from our lawyers to make sure that it was clear. They felt that we needed to add a little bit more information.
I'll make a motion that we vote to accept the updates to the Westboro High School and Gibbons Middle School Dress Code.
And I'll second it based on not only the document we have in hard copy in front of us, but also what's presented on the screen.
Thank you.
Accept that change? I know it isn't, but I'm, what I, what I wanted, I want the public to be able to say they saw what we voted.
Oh, okay. Yes. And it'll be in the policy?
I understand that.
In the handbook.
Yeah, you can see the red line change there, available. Thank you. Which is how we bring all those changes to you and follows the updates that, you know, most schools are providing to their handbooks. What happens is legal cases come out continually, and the lawyers that represent all of the districts cycle through updates with guidance on our policies. So, this one came through. We want to use it to update the book now. And then, you'll do a whole other cycle of policy updates probably mid-year. So, they've all come out, and because this one's active for the start of the year and applies to students on the ground, I like to make sure I fold it in now.
Very good. Is, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Thank you very much. And then, the, the other policy work, I know that Lynn will cycle forward to, I think Kristin and Steve decide when they want to look at it as a package. And I think we're, I think she's got that piece nailed down. So, thank you.
Next item is the Summer Lunch Program Report and Free Lunch during the 23-24 school year.
Excellent. This past summer, we ran a pilot program for summer meals for families. It was designed to help families within our community access healthy meals throughout the summer. And Chartwells did a wonderful job delivering meals and/or providing meals for families to pick up. We served 1,150 meals to families throughout the summer, which is excellent. The cost of the families were at $0.00, and it was very successful for us. And we're hoping to offer the same program next summer as well. So, it was really good. In addition, we also offered summer meals to our students that were participating in the community ed camps. Those meals were at a cost of $4.00 per lunch, and they served around 466 meals. Those meals were at a cost of $4 per lunch and they served around 466 meals this summer. So again, very excellent turnout, so we were really happy with that.
Yeah, I talked to Brian Bacon this week and he thinks that it's a nice addition and will grow over time for his program as families learn it's a flexible part of, we're running fast and we can, we can drop our kid off and we don't need to get lunch made, they can purchase it. And that takes a while to take hold traction wise. This follows the plan that we gave you. You voted at the close of the year for families with food insecurity to make sure that we sustain their programming support through the summer. The number of meals served tells you that there was an important need for it and they were able to swing by and picked up the bagged lunches to take and were there consistently. And we were accessing a gift fund set aside to cover the food cost. And we indicated, if you look back at that memo, when I bring it for you forward next year to look at the summer preparation, I'll probably do some fundraising to offset that cost. And I'm really pleased that, to see this kind of diversity of program that we're just enhancing.
So was the net cost to the district then, the payroll cost?
Net cost to payroll, yes, was the cost for payroll, which we, was paid through the Chartwell's revolving account.
Okay.
Where they take salary. So the only, the cost to the district, I guess, would be the $3,974.51 for the food cost of the meals that were covered. And that's the part that I'll put on that, on the gift revolving account that I said I would use to pay for the food this year. The salaries go to Chartwell, the food cost went to our revolving gift fund where I think I have to, I didn't, I should have linked the other memo, but that's what you approved in the spring. And so I think I'll probably look for like a $5,000 to $8,000 donation to sustain the program moving forward so that we would cover all the food costs moving into it for next year if we find that we're still in a place where food insecurity kind of feels like we want that summer covered. So I'm really happy with how it went and that the staff stepped up to work. You know, they, they need a break too, but they knew it was important and they know a lot of these families and so it was really great to see them rotate through to work through the summer.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Last item is the shelter and homeless family update.
Oh, and actually I'm going to give it back to Anita for a moment because she was going to give you an update on free lunch for the upcoming year as well.
Okay.
So I'm happy to announce that we will be able to provide free meals to our students again, which, which includes breakfast and lunch. And we're also going to be starting a new lunch offering, which is a milk lunch, which we're targeting towards students that bring lunches from home. So a milk lunch consists of a milk carton, a vegetable, and a fruit. So we're really happy about that. In addition, I want to make sure that parents and families know that they should still fill out the free and reduced lunch application. Just because we're getting free meals, it doesn't mean that they should not be filling that application out. That application can help waive the fee for athletics, for activities, for clubs, for fine arts programs. And it can also help the school district itself with our free and reduced grants that we can get from the state and so on and so forth. So I want to make sure that families still know that we highly encourage them still to fill out the application for us.
Nice addition to be able to add the milk lunch because the structure of that was that, you know, students will still need to fill their meal card with money through their parents if they want to do the à la carte and the additional stuff, but they should be able to get milk covered for reimbursement from the state. But unless we package it with the fruit and the vegetable, which is a nice enhancement to the meal they bring from home, we can't get the reimbursement. So it was, it was building that deficit that we had and we, by law, remember they changed it, we have to pay that off at the close of every year. So we can't let that deficit cycle and grow beyond, you know, what's reasonable in terms of like closing that out each year. So I'm pleased to see that's Anita's brainchild that she brought forward from the way that they did it in her last district and so I'll be interested to see, I think that'll be really good. We doubled our meal sales last year or move, moving meals. The, once they became free last year again, so many more students started partaking in lunch. So really a very positive program statewide. I think it's really good news that we've seen the state step up to cover it.
Is this flyer being widely circulated in the sense that maybe we could put like a hyper, a link for your, for the application as well on there? Or information about the application is just easy to access?
Yes, so the application and the flyer is online.
And I think they share it in the first aid packet again too. So it goes out multiple times from the school level, but we'll make sure we're circulating it and talking about it. All right. So you, look at that, it's 7/11 here, we're almost done. I wanted to provide a brief update to you. I think there's been a lot of discussion around our homeless crisis in Massachusetts and across the nation with housing availability and an increase in families being displaced because of the change in right to evict, as well as an infusion of people coming into the state that have come from other countries or refugees, a whole array of circumstances lead to a family being homeless. Both families in Massachusetts, families in the United States, families in the wider world. And so we have had the same impact that many communities have. You saw that the governor did an announcement of a emergency action. There isn't a particular change in that. I mean, I was hoping that they would give them the right to activate the National Guard and to activate emergency Red Cross nursing support and those types of things. She hasn't taken the move to use the emergency notice to do any of that. I think it lets her put the feds on notice for accessing additional funding potentially. But as of yet, the emergency notification hasn't provided any particular impact at the, at the individual community levels. It does help to put the wider public on notice, whereas what was happening is individual communities that were being hit with an increase in homeless families were kind of like dealing with it in the, at the community level. And I think it was starting to press enough into a variety of communities that sharing a more public notice and a more public stance was an aspect of the intent. For us on the ground, you know, since the spring that we had an increase in homeless families. We enroll quite a few families every year and some of them have always suffered from homelessness. It's just that there's an increase in our numbers. So I wanted to keep it on your radar that we've continued to have state level and local level meetings with our state representatives, SMOC, and a whole variety of this resource groups that coordinate these services. I'm meeting every two weeks and then I'm in contact with a variety of other people. We kind of banded together as a Metro West group and that has influenced a more positive senate level impact and state level impact when we kind of bonded together and we pulled a meeting from the three boroughs together to press on them around aspects of need and coordination, communication, and service supports at the shelters, either the hotel shelter or permanent shelters. As of now, I would say it's status quo. We're kind of a little bit ahead of the curve and are actually answering people's questions now because communities that are just, I took a call from a community today, I was trying to figure out the steps we had taken and how to handle, you know, 55 people that had been dropped into their community. And so we are at a stable place of implementation, but the impact of the unpredictability of it is, you know, complex for all of us. Currently, we have 21 homeless students that are enrolled to start in, in the fall. Nine are new, so nine of the 21 are new. Eight of the 21 are in K to 3 and the rest of the balance are in Milpond and up. Four of the students are actually Westboro Public School students already who got displaced from housing with eviction and are currently residing in another community and now being bused into Westboro. There's a range of service deliveries that these families come with, L service, IEPs, wraparound needs. I feel like we're in a good place. You know, I'd like to see that number stabilize so that we can effectively support these families and get the students into school and start to work with them academically. So I feel like we're in a good place. I will keep you updated on the progress and if something substantial changes, I'll put it on the agenda and rotate it in. The, the main piece that we will be looking for is the opening of the Sharp Building as a permanent shelter site. That will change the dynamic for us, I believe, in town and we'll have to let, see how that evolves. I've been working closely with town manager Christie Williams and a subcommittee of people to anticipate. That's what we talk about in a lot of these regular meetings with the state, is kind of pressing them on their timelines. It keeps getting pushed back, so I don't anticipate that they'll be opening that shelter before January. And what will happen is we are pressing them not to backfill the hotels. That's our main ask because if they rotate the 21 students and families we have into that permanent shelter, because we have them stabilized in school, they're enrolled, they're still homeless, there's no other placement for them, we would rather see them out of the hotels and into a stable shelter framework, which has better structure and amenities than single room hotels. And then return the hotels to their business need and the community service they're supposed to provide. That's basically the singular ask that we've been driving through our meetings. I'm carrying that representation for the schools and will continue to do so and I'll update you kind of as we move forward.
I had a question. Is it okay that I ask a question? Sorry, to the chair. Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry. Regarding, I think part of what we discussed in the spring was that there was a lot of pressure, you know, with the influx of quite a few people and that there was no equity in terms of how the, the placement was happening town-wise, that there was, the distribution was very sort of not equal. So I'm trying to understand if there's been any, I know you're saying that the announcement that was made was to engage the larger public, but was there any actual change on the ground in terms of how those distributions and how the placements are being done?
So, great question. I would say yes and no. It's kind of an and, which is more communities are now being impacted to make sure that there is a sharing of the need across, plus our hotels then also get booked out. And oftentimes they're contracting for only so many rooms in their overall hotel service delivery. More, more communities are being leveraged and however, the and is that we have not received a clear reassurance from the state that they will create kind of a formula for impact, you know, per community or that they will guarantee they won't backfill those hotels because they're just in such an emergency need. We are basically, as a community, you're at basically, you're beholden to the hotels that decided as private businesses to contract with the state. That is the driving feature. So if a community has hotels that don't decide to participate in contracting with the state and they only want to be in the extended stays because there's the kitchenette structure. So it's, you know, it's a very kind of volatile in terms of the process and there's no one particularly in charge of the private entities that decide if they want to participate in that contract service. So that is really the defining feature. Now, some communities apply a range of other, you know, pressures to limit the number of hotel usages. At this point, I think we're stable, but I'm going to continue to seek that and that's what I'm talking to our representatives about. It's a little better. You know, we've seen a slowdown, but who knows? You know, it just, like, the community that got 55 people and 18 kids that arrived yesterday. So, you know, they must have anchored another hotel and they brought a set of families, so...
Particularly, you were pointing to the boroughs and how they weren't all, the distribution was not, you know, yeah, I think Westboro was mostly affected and I'm not sure how Northboro was, but at that time, that was a conversation, even Framingham had come into that.
Right.
So I don't know if that's still the case, but...
Yeah, no, you're right. It is still the case in the sense that there's many communities not impacted at all and then areas where there's hotspots of, you know, and again, they're, they're trying to consolidate their services so they can support these families. So they have the same staffing shortages that we talk about with the busing, you know. So they don't have enough people to leave a liaison at all of those hotels to do certified kind of organized service coordination. And so they're trying to consolidate people in spaces so they can provide help. So it's, it doesn't come from a bad place on anybody's part, but it creates a cascade of complexities that we have to deal with. At this point, I feel like we're in a good place and, you know, I'll keep you updated and I'll continue to drive the discussion around the equity, the balance, and the clarity of sharing across multiple communities.
Kind of interesting that there have been unexpected consequences of the, of this process by virtue of this contract, if you will, for services supplied. You may have heard recently, I think it's the South Shore Community where owners of residences were evicting people who had relatively low rents in order to make that space available for immigrants at the contracted price at a higher rent, obviously, to the, to the property owner. And so, I mean, that's totally unfair, but it is, you know, the sequence of things that happen as stuff that isn't very well thought out occurs.
Yeah.
You know, we have our consequences in terms of unknown students that appear and then obviously there are other things. But clearly, the issue needs to be resolved at the federal level because that has been where the problem has been for years, 10 years, 15 years. I mean, you know, there's a political reason why this happens for sure, but still, you and I have to pay for these consequences. The feds don't seem to belly up to the bar for what they've created. And so it's an issue that's going to continue and may very well get worse until somebody finally says it's too much.
I think you're right. And I think the other part we're just going to have to watch is that you can't create housing quickly. So you're also looking at affordable housing for people trying to be first time home buyers. Like, it's a whole tiered model where, you know, the fact that our housing became so highly escalated at the state and then we weren't adding new housing at that affordable level, you know, these big gaps. And so, you know, again, I think it's something we're going to have to watch and as a public municipal entity, we're in the mix for, for needing to participate in helping them understand the impacts of the problems and also support people that are in need. So I feel, I just want to give a shout out to the town, the coordinated work. Christie has done an incredibly good job to tackle this, to coordinate, to talk to people, to contact state legislatures, to work with the surrounding community. I think she's done a really fine job in her leadership and I've been able to collaborate with her. And when school starts, she knows we carry the weight of the school piece, but the town has really stepped up, the food pantry, all the services. And so I just want to give a shout out to everybody and let you know that we'll keep you updated, so. That's it, you made it to the end of your agenda?
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions, comments before we adjourn? Ene? Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah. I will move that we adjourn for the evening. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. 5-0-0.
We are adjourned.
All right.